Ready? Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County Cochise, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at seven o'clock in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollock is excused. Councilmember Joni Giacominno?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein is excused. City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, state clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Doug Taylor, city planner, Alberti Chavec, police chief, Jim Richardson, acting fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Well, thank you, everybody that's here tonight and is online with us for attending. We're starting to get a few more people here. That's good. We're getting back into something normalcy. So for tonight, for a moment of silence, we just had Veterans Day. I know that passed, but we had a couple of really good events that honored the vets. And I just think that one more time for us to think about our veterans and what they've given for our country and to give a few moments of silence for those that have given their life and also for those that have served. So if you go with me for a minute here, thank you. Thank you. Let's do a pledge of allegiance.
My first allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as any announcements or proclamations, all I've been doing is moving item nine to the last thing on the agenda so that we can hear the city manager's report before we go into a regular session. That will be the one change. So we'll move on now to first order of business. And we'll call to the public. And I don't have anybody signed up except for item number five. Does anybody else?
Can I sign up for three?
Oh, for number three?
Yeah.
Okay, we can wait for three. I'll call on you then. Okay? The call to the public is where we don't make any comments to anyone after the... Okay. So we'll move on after the call to the public to general business. First item on the agenda. Item one is accounts payable. Our accounts payable persons are here tonight, so I'll make the motion that we approve accounts payable in the amount of $289,194.78.
A second, Matt.
Do we have anybody who'd like to ask anything on accounts payable?
You do. On page seven, 1077, on the dog receptacle, the amount of 17.76, 12 cents. I know that has been discussed, was brought up by a couple of people, but I just would like some clarification on that and some information and how many of those we have, because that amount seems to be a bit high. So if someone can tell us, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, that invoice is actually for four doggy waste receptacles and bags. And they're similar to all of the receptacles that we place in all of the city parks throughout the city. And we just happened to buy four more for use in wherever they need to go next. So a lot of times when they wear out, they get vandalized, they need to be replaced. So we just purchased four. So take that number, divide by four, and that's how much it cost the least.
Okay, was this, were these just purchased? Or was there, I mean, comparatively speaking, was there any, like, did we do any price comparative on this? Or comparison, we just... It's just the amount? The question is the amount?
We haven't in past years.
Okay.
And we like to standardize them on the same ones so we can use the same bags everywhere. Not all bags are alike.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can add.
I have some other couple.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. On page eight, account number 1075, on Herman Global, $3,375. I would just like to know if someone can give me an explanation of that amount? What's that for?
It's just for marketing. It's the Arizona Rural Campaign. It's our contractor for the visitor center, Dog Cat Mouse Media. They appear all the advertising, and it's one of the advertisers.
Okay.
I mean, I couldn't give the invoice for you.
No, I don't need the invoice. But was this? Because that would have been my second sense. If you don't mind, I can continue with the question here. Because I need to go back. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I mean, I go back to the same, and I know I brought it up a couple of times. Really, it just comes up all the time on a dog and cat media or agency. I don't know what kind of... I would like to know. Maybe you can explain to me. What are the expectations? What are the deliverables we were expecting from this company that was doing this for us? Because I've yet to see anything on the ground. Basically, I mentioned this up, a flyer or guide for the tourists when they come to this town. So this, and now we have that they have a subcontractor. Is that what Herman Global is subcontractor? Used by dog and cat?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Dog Cat Mouse Media is a contractor for the city of Bisbee. And we've contracted with them for the last three years, I believe, now. And they handle all of our advertising, marketing, website, and Facebook promotions for Discover Bisbee. Okay? So anytime you see something on Facebook from Discover Bisbee, they did it. Every time you see an ad someplace for Bisbee, they did it. They don't operate out front. They deal with AOT. They deal with the advertisers. As you recall, we have a co-op agreement with AOT that everything that you see here that we pay for for marketing and advertising is half price because we pay 50% of the advertising cost. AOT pays the other 50% of the advertising cost. So the invoices you see here are actually half of what we would pay if we didn't have the co-op agreement with AOT. So Dog Cat Mouse Media does the front work for us to deal with getting the advertising set up, working with AOT, working with our website, working with all of our promotional materials, getting our maps printed, getting our maps changed when they need to be changed. You'll be seeing some new maps coming out. And of course, we just ordered a bunch more with some changes in it to update for changes in businesses and that sort of thing. So they don't work out front. They work behind the scenes. But they do important work that we can't do because they're in the advertising business and we're not. Staff does work with them at the beginning of the year to help decide which advertising vehicles we're going to use in the coming year for our cooperative advertising through AOT. And then I approve the individual invoices, not invoices, but orders, and then the invoices, and send bills over to finance for payment. So I get involved on the back end. They get involved on the front end. They're marketing people. They're advertising people. Staff is not.
Okay. If I may. Steve, I mean, I mean, thank you for this explanation, but basically you're just telling me we just pay in half, and you didn't know what they're doing? My question...
I didn't say, I did not say we didn't know what they were doing.
Okay, who's monitoring the activities? Are you monitoring the activities?
City managers present.
Because I have not seen a map in over a year now.
I know because we're out. We've got some on order right now.
Yes, but I've not seen a map. You said maps, you do the maps. Well, I've not seen a map in over a year.
Well, and I've only been here six months, so...
Okay, so that's why, that's the reason. I'm not, the reason I'm bringing this, Steve, so we need to make sure we go and monitor the activities and make sure we're getting our money's worth. What are we paying it? Or somebody else is paying us?
It would be as expensive as we are.
What, anyway?
Okay, so one thing we have to do is stay on the accounts.
Okay, well, I'm staying with those.
Yeah, I know. We don't get off on the whole advertising. We're talking about one individual bill. If you want to go the other way up, we'll make that a general, not a problem.
Yeah, no, okay. No, Mayor, the reason I brought it up because I brought this up a couple of times before. And finally, I have to bring it up again. But anyway, last one. I just want to know about this so it can be explained to me. Probably some of you know this. The Bisbee City Fund, the city of Douglas, $17,439.25, account 6391. I just, maybe somebody can tell me about it.
Page number, please.
Page 12.
The bus, isn't it?
The bus, yeah. But I just want to know the amount, about the amount.
Okay.
What's this for, for how long?
Sure. For the last few years, we have contracted for the administration and the operation of the Bisbee Bus System through Douglas Rides. And of course, Douglas Rides is administered by the city of Douglas. So we receive federal money through the 5311 program, which is service transportation. And that money is used to operate the Bisbee Bus System. We get the money. We pay the money to the city of Douglas and Douglas Rides so that they can administer our bus system for us.
Okay.
So you still have a Bisbee Bus System, but you don't have the people or the administration costs that's involved there. So you paid Douglas to do that with the federal money we received.
For what period is this amount? For how long?
It's usually an annual contract.
So it's for the year?
We go out the general.
Yeah, so it's for the year. That's all I need to know. So it's $17,439 for the entire year?
No, it's not for the year. It's a monthly cost.
So that's for a month?
Right.
Okay. And based on this, what income do we get? I mean, how much of the income covers this amount we get from the riders? Does it like pay itself?
That's why we get federal money.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Just this from a public health perspective. No public transportation in the United States has been for itself anywhere since 1958. And it's a public service.
Okay, I just want to know how much of this we get? I mean, is 50%, 30%, 40%? Do you have an idea? Just like...
I'm sorry. I don't follow. 50% of what?
Of the 17 times. How much do we get back from the riders? How much money do we get? Because we charge.
We get nickels and dimes.
What happens is we do fund a little bit out of the general fund once a year, right? For this overall.
There's a small amount we pay out of the general fund.
Yeah, it's very few.
Mel, I think if you really want a full accounting of the Bisbee Bus System, you might want to come in, sit down with Carrie, and she can go through it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay.
And I said I wasn't going to say anything.
Anyone else? Wanting to go? All right. Motion and a second is on the table. Call for a roll call.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes. Yes. All right. Five zero. We're going to move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. Item A is just approval of some minutes. Item B is approval of the resignation of Joan Raichel from the Library Board. Item C is a parking facility use permit for brewery gulch. D is an approval of the application for a patio permit, electric beer... beer? Brewing. And E is approval of the application for another special liquor license at Club Killamajaro. I'm going to pull item D because I have some questions on it. I'm sorry. Correction. I'm going to pull item C. I have some question on that. Anybody else have anything?
If I just want to make a comment, do I have to pull it?
Yes.
So then I'd like to pull B.
Okay, so we're going to pull B and C. Anything else? All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, D, and E.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A, D, and E.
A second.
Motion, a second, approve the consent agenda, items A, D, and E. Roll call.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes. Item B.
I would just like to personally thank Joan for all that she's done for the city of Bisbee through the library. I've worked with her in other programs, and she's been, I think, a blessing to the city of Bisbee's children in reading programs and all that she's touched. And it makes me sad to see that she's...
I mean, how many years it's...
Forever.
It's like eight, four or something?
Yeah, I mean, she, but just her whole involvement with other things, too. And I just want to be recognized for that.
Well, then you can make your approvals. To accept the resignation, even though you hate it.
You would say that was going to happen.
Well...
Okay.
We move to approve.
Okay, I move to approve the resignation of Joan Raichel from the Library Advisory Board.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. Item C, I don't know if we have anybody here that represents Old Ship Rules?
We do.
Okay. Great, thank you. So just a couple of quick questions for you. Would you mind? In your, in your application down here, you put a liquor permit. Are you going to go for a liquor permit process? Are you going to sell liquor? Is it just going to be for the piece of liquor?
The bars will be distributing the liquor.
So you won't be evolving any of the...
No, sir. Previously, in the five years, I don't know if you're aware of it, we did a, did it for five years up at the park. We distributed the beer, but this year, we decided, as you can see, to put it on Main Street. So we want to give back, let the community, their professionals at it, let them distribute it.
Okay. That's why, I just, on your application, you checked the liquor part of it.
Because we didn't know if that was, you know, we figured that was a part of the process.
Yeah.
But then when we had the, we'd have for a pre-approval.
Well, that's why I didn't see it coming up. And that's why, that was my first question for you. The second one is on your maps where you show how you block up brewery gulch.
Yes, sir.
We've got to have a way for the cars to get out. Okay? So you're thinking it'll go up around the park?
Yes.
Okay. But the blocking shows is it's right there at the head of where the two lanes are. That would, that would bring people down knowing what they're doing, have to flip a U. So my suggestion is if we're going to block the road, it needs to be blocked up by city park, not down where you have a mark on your, on your map. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you're talking about the...
The downward travel. You have a road barricaded right, right there at the start of parking lot.
Yeah, that, that was just a kind of a barricade to stop people from coming into the event.
Right, so we have to ship them up. I'm sure that you've noticed.
Yeah, we're going to have cones about right here.
We need to move that up so that you push everybody up around the park.
So I think the original tent on the next page, Mr. Mayor, if I may, is to route traffic up around there and block it there. But I think they want to keep that open also for traffic. If parking opens up there, to allow cars to come into park. But they will have it blocked above the event as well so that no cars can get into where they're actually having their...
No, yeah, I understand. So motorcycles come up, they can get into park. But people coming down from St. Amos need to be able to be directed up and around city park.
Right, that's part of the signage that we requested in our pre-plant meeting of them to make sure that they had it marked there for one ways. Yeah, we decided we would make the detour signs up here. We do laminate and sign work, so we're going to...
Right, I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't... Number one shows that it was, that's where the blocking was going to be. And I could just see people coming down having to do U's there.
No, no. I mean, the thing is, too, is we'll be standing... Because the way we did it in the past is I was pretty much, me and four other partners stood at the road.
Right.
And we would pretty much greet everybody and then tell them, okay, your bike goes in the show, your bike parks on the road. So we'll have that same one somewhat with the signage to help direct that. We won't leave that open. We'll make sure that there's people there, make sure they're guiding the bikes in. Cars will make sure that they're following the signs. So I'll practically be out on the road helping guide all that, no way.
All right. Since this is a new way, you haven't done before, I just wanted to double check so that...
Yep.
It's all good. That's... The other thing I have is on the application, there was a parked person that was...
We declined that when we spoke with the sheriff's department and everybody. We agree that's not something that's needed.
Okay, you'll take care of the old cleanup yourself?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you got the, you got the...
We're part of the community, so we plan to make sure to...
I'm just making a public...
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no problem. Any other questions on C? Okay, then I make motion to approve a parking facility right-of-use permit that is number C on the consent agenda for Old Ship Rules for brewery gulch on March 20th, 2022, starting at 11:59 a.m. No, I'm sorry, 18th, 2022, at 11:59 p.m. And ending on Sunday, March 20th, 2022, at 11:59 a.m.
A second, Matt.
Motion, a second, approve a parking facility use permit and C on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice hat. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're approved.
Yes.
We can promote the event. We're downtown.
Now, you only have to march to get there.
Right on. Thanks, guys. I'm really welcome. Right on. Woo!
No one else?
So are you?
I want to see a representative from the county do that. Thanks for all, yeah?
They had a website. So we just brought it down.
People just got to eat it, but I... All right. Let's move on to old business. This is item three. This is discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-21-17 to rezone APM 10362025 and 10362027 and 10362025B. This is 100 Claussen Avenue, owned by Cochise County from R1 to CM2.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Hi, Doug.
Good evening. It's a hard act to follow.
If you got confetti, you can throw it.
You have your beer, that's what you know.
You have an application before you by the county for a zone change for 100 Claussen Avenue, the old high school. It's an unusual building, 45,000 square feet. In its location, it's unusual. 45,000 square feet, 50 spaces for parking. And they want to go from an R1 to a CM2. I had spoken previously in favor of this because I felt it gave them the most flexibility in looking for a new tenant. I don't like to see a building sit forever, and it could, anyway. The boxes on the rezoning application evaluation criteria, it checks some of them, and it, a lot of them are because, you know, they, some of the streets in Bisbee don't really match sort of the intent you know, they, some of the, uh, streets in Bisbee don't really match sort of the intent of, of a, uh, easy on, easy off kind of, uh, approach. So I do feel that this ticks all the boxes in, uh, the evaluation criteria. But it is unusual and it isn't, uh, physically attached to another CM two zone. But it is the appropriate, I believe, zone for this, uh, for a use for this building.
Thank you. I think he really didn't want us to get through, so I think that was, and thought through the consent agenda. Okay. Thank you. Uh, yeah, this is the second reading. We followed the presentation by the county, uh, two weeks ago. So, any discussion? Say no, I'm under a motion.
I move to approve ordinance zero dash twenty-one dash seventeen to rezone APM one oh two dash six two dash zero two five, one oh three dash six two dash zero two seven and one oh three six two dash zero two five B. One hundred Claussen Avenue, owned by Cochise County, from R one to CM dash two.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve old business item number three. Roll call please.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Nay.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweed.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes four one. All right, moving on to new business. This is item number four. This is discussion of possible approval of the recommendation of the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application, uh, for an amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund for Kenbow. Uh, Leslie.
Okay, so this is, um, Kenbow requested that the Bisbee Arts Commission continue to fund the Bisbee Poetry Normalization Project. And if you've seen the poems posted on the telephone poles around town, that's what that is. And he actually went before the committee twice and they wanted him to make some changes this year, like including other poets. And I think there's going to be an event. So anyway, he, the commission sent him back, he came back, they liked what he did, so they're asking to purchase an amount of five hundred dollars to continue Kenbow's project.
Questions, anybody? I say a motion, Leslie.
Okay, I move to approve the recommendations from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Kenbow in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item four on the new business for a grant application amount of five hundred dollars. Roll call.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweed.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Moving on, so the item number five. This will be a discussion of possible acceptance of a donation of an informational kiosk from the Bisbee Foundation to the city of Bisbee to be placed in Vista Park. Who wants to present this one?
We have Mr. Dunn here as well.
Okay, well, he signed up. I just wondered if anybody on staff wanted to say something. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is, uh, Bill Daley. I'm on the, uh, Parks and Recs Committee. Um, I got on the committee because a friend of mine thought it would be a good idea and said it would be fun. So far it has been. Uh, once I got on the committee, I thought, well, I should have some agenda or something to present. And I've had a house here in Bisbee for over thirty years, and I started reading the history of Bisbee and Warren. And, uh, I found out that, uh, Warren at one time was called the City Beautiful. And back between nineteen oh seven and up until about nineteen twenty, it was referred to as the City Beautiful. And the City Beautiful was a movement that started back east because of the rapid industrialization going on at that time. Plants being built, workers and stuff like that. And to attract the best workers, they came up with back east, the City Beautiful Plan. And there were two cities back there that I know of, Harris, uh, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania and Washington DC. And like I said, the movement was to attract the best workers, so you put in the best housing. Let me read to you, this is, uh, the, the landscape designer who came out, first came out to Bisbee in nineteen oh six, was Warren Henry Manning, not George Manning, the, the town of Warren was named after George Manning. But this is Warren Henry Manning. And, uh, in a letter to his wife, he described Bisbee as this. Such a town you never saw in your life. It is all on edge, except where the edges meet at the bottom. Houses are stuck into the hillsides, arranged at every possible angle, as though they had been tumbled down the hillsides and patched up into a town where they happened to land. So the City Beautiful Movement was to taking a thousand acres of Warren and creating Vista Park, the two boulevards, and to have land there for workers to buy plots of land and build their homes. They also had the trolley running between Warren and Bisbee to the site of where the workers worked. But then, you know, it was interesting, all the time I've been coming to Bisbee, I never see anything that reflects the fact that Bisbee, Warren was a city beautiful. And when you read about it, it's really, uh, really quite interesting. So here's some, um, points, just to give you of what I read. These are, um, summations of, uh, things that I've read. In the late nineteenth century, in the eighteen hundreds, the term city beautiful would not have applied to most mining towns, especially, uh, uh, here in Bisbee, after that description by Henry, um, Man, Henry Warren Manning. In the twentieth century, there was rapid industrialization and much competition for workers. Uh, there were over twenty thousand people at one time in Bisbee. The City Beautiful Movement came about because of that, to provide and retain quality workers. There's a friend of mine, um, who's a British guy, and he remembers as a kid living in England that his grandfather came over to the United States to work in the mines. And he thought it was Bisbee, but it turned out it was Cantonaya. But that's interesting, you think of, uh, the mining. Mining was a big deal. It was like the Facebook of the time. I mean, it was like the high tech. You would come from other countries to work, uh, in Bisbee or in Cantonaya. There was also a time of what they called the Bo Art Movement. And the Bo Art Movement was, uh, was to make life more like in the, in the, uh, European towns. Uh, Bo Arts, I looked up the definitions of Bo Arts and it said, it pertains to order, symmetry and formal design. All of those not happening out here in Bisbee at first. Okay, uh, then the Calama, Arizona Mining Co., started planning the town site when they decided that Bisbee, this area would be, and Warren would be a good place for a city beautiful. Two hundred homes on a thousand acres. It was to consist of wide boulevards and a long Vista Park, which I just mentioned. Uh, there was a dance pavilion at the time and a swimming pool. Ground was broken after the plans were drawn up. Ground was broken in nineteen oh seven. Uh, also, uh, the Warren Bisbee Electric Rail Car was instituted because there were, people didn't have, uh, a, a way of getting around other than trains and cars were not a big thing. Uh, at the time of the Warren Bisbee Electric Rail Car inauguration in nineteen oh eight, it was the most modern streetcar system in the world. That's what the historians say. I mean, that's, you got, well, that's be interesting. But you don't see any signs of anything talking about any of that. The annual ridership of the electric rail car in nineteen seventeen was over two million riders. And that's not different riders, maybe a person gets on and gets off, gets on, but two, 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 over two million riders, that's huge. The oldest baseball park in Arizona was built in Warren in nineteen oh eight. And like I mentioned, from the beginning of the town's development up until the nineteen twenties, Warren was consistently referred to as City Beautiful. So I initially came up, uh, this has been going on for about a year and a half. I initially came up and, um, presented to the Parks and Recs. I thought, well, we should have like a, a billboard or something, you know, and I was thinking on Congdon Avenue at the Vista, and that's the road that most people take down Bisbee Road, there's a stop sign, you turn onto Congdon Avenue. There's a house right at that turn that a guy has a private house and he has welcome to Warren on, just written on his building there, you know, I think it's a duplex. And it's pretty cool. And so that's how I got the idea that it should be up in that area because I think that's where most people come. So initially I thought there should be a, like a billboard, maybe six by, you know, very simple, that would say Warren, the City Beautiful, with some pictures to show people why it was considered a city beautiful. We just didn't name it ourselves. It was something that, uh, was planned. And, uh, since I did bring it up to, uh, I talked to Doug Dunn at some point, and, um, he said I ought to bring it up to the Bisbee Foundation, which I did. And they awarded us a five thousand dollar challenge grant. So Doug Dunn put me in place with Michael Page, and he thought it was a great idea. Michael Page did a kiosk informational thing in the Evergreen Cemetery. What you look at, it's pretty cool, very old fashioned. Michael Page has kind of an artistic idea. So I've got some brochures I'm gonna just give everybody. I've got ten of them of what Michael Page and us, what we came up with. It's actually, I think it's very cool. But anyway, this is what we were thinking of doing. If, if you see that location there, that's kind of in the middle of Vista Park, there on Congdon Avenue. And that telephone pole, uh, we would, there's a telephone pole there now and there's something about a dog ordinance on that little metal sign to the right. But we would shift it over one side or another so it's not right there where the telephone pole is.
Good idea.
And, uh, that's our proposal. Um, we feel like we have the money coming in. We could get it through volunteer donations. Michael Page is, uh, very into doing something like crowdfunding or even us and Parks and Rec going door to door to collect money. And we feel like this would be something that would just energize Warren. That basically, it's, uh, it's kind of an unknown that people don't know that it, as in those days, it was a big deal.
Okay, um, thank you. Do you know when it was, when Warren was incorporated into the city?
No, I don't.
Okay, I, I read that and I'm trying to be real, trying to remember.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't. It must have been pretty soon, right or what?
No, no, I've done so much history stuff and all that dates started to run together, but yeah, it's, it was, you know, incorporated into the, in the, into Bisbee City at some point. Okay, uh, Doug, do you want to say something?
Uh, I just want to second, uh, he brought this to the, uh, Bisbee Foundation. I'm president of the Bisbee Foundation. We are very excited by what's been presented here. Uh, and we offered then a challenge grant to get this off the ground and running. We also offered to be the facilitator in terms of local fundraising. So, uh, it's not going to be through the city, but it will be through us. So everything will be, uh, financially, uh, done for you. Uh, we're certainly asking, uh, you know, permission to do this and installation, basically. The city will be doing the installation. Uh, but certainly we will be, uh, I'm stepping forward, we're stepping forward, Bisbee Foundation, in terms of doing the fundraising for this. I think it's just a fantastic, uh, proposal, so, uh, we're with him.
Thank you. Questions?
No, I, I just think it's, uh, I think it's wonderful that, uh, Warren's finally getting recognized for all of the attributes. It's been kind of a, written in such a lonely thing. I just feel like.
That's right.
I grew up there, and there's so much of Warren that people don't realize. And I, I think your design is fantastic. Uh, Michael Page is a great.
He's great.
Great artist and, uh, you know, the one in the cemetery is wonderful too, but this is going to be a great asset. Uh, thanks for all the hard work and thanks for facilitating it, Doug, um, through the foundation. It's really great.
And then after this, we get the rail car running again?
Yeah.
Wonder where a few tracks still are.
And I want to second what Joni said. I, I thank you guys. I appreciate the work that you guys have done. And finally, Warren will have a badge, like someone who doesn't have a knee badge. So this is what really, because I talk to, uh, to people about Warren when they come to town, when they ask him about Bisbee. And finally, you can go to a place and look and get more information, get some history about the town. I thank you very much.
I think secondarily, it'd be nice to see Warren. When I first came to Warren, there was a barber shop, the post office. I mean, there was activity and it's kind of died off. It would be nice to have some of that come back.
Yeah, you want to, quickly, the, the, General Cal is going to open a, a whole new center there behind their pharmacy now, the training center. So they're going to pave that parking lot, so more is coming to, to the main street. But yes, go ahead.
And thank you, Mayor, and, uh, and not to mention, um, that last week, uh, Shippo, the State Historic Preservation Office was in town. Uh, they did a tour of the Warren Ballpark, which is currently under consideration as a national historic landmark, um, which is a big plus, uh, for, for the Warren area. Uh, in addition to that, um, Eric Bondi from Shippo, who we all know from many years of working with us, has asked me about, uh, how much interest there is in finally finishing the Warren survey. Doug, I, I see you laughing because I know you were one of those people that was going up and down the street helping us do the survey, uh, now many years ago. And we're almost to the finish line and it's on the shelf right now. Eric wants to help us finish it and as soon as my neck gets above water, uh, we're going to resurrect and, and complete that. And not to mention that you, everyone has to have noticed that there has been some activity at City Hall. So things are happening in Warren.
All right, anybody want to make a motion for more?
I will. Make a motion, I guess.
Yep.
Uh, I move to accept a donation of informational kiosk from the Bisbee Foundation to the city of Bisbee to be placed in Vista Park.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for item number five to accept the donation of the kiosk. Roll call.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweed.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks a bunch, guys. We're excited to see you.
Yeah, we're supposed to walk, walk.
It's supposed to do a flip or something.
Sorry, it's Thursday night.
Told you they were going to be the most excited ones.
Once it's installed, we'll let them do it. Right. All right, let's, uh, we're moving right along. Let's go to our agenda item number six. This will be discussion of possible approval of a fifth agreement, oh, sorry, a fifth amendment to the agreement for the sale and purchase of reclaimed water between the city of Bisbee and Freeport MacMoran Corporation. City Manager.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Um, this, uh, contract is the fifth extension, or a two-year agreement, which, um, originally was, um, approved by council, well, it's wrong, eight, eight years ago. Yeah, during, during my first shift. And, uh, basically it is identical to amendments one, two and three. Um, and, um, we'll extend the contract for two more years, um, at the purchase price of twenty-five cents per thousand gallons of water. So, um, as many of you are aware, the, um, all of the infrastructure to pump water from the wastewater treatment plant to areas where Freeport MacMoran is doing, um, any kind of re, uh, renovation work, is already in place and has been in place since the original contract was approved by council. So, all they have to do when they, when they need to pump water, uh, from our wastewater plant is to energize the pumps. And, uh, they, they not only will pump from our facility to wherever they need to go, they will pay us a certain amount of money, uh, to, for the amount of electricity they use. Their pumps are actually metered, so they'll be using our electricity, but that will be reimbursing us for the electricity they use. This is the same deal that's been in existence, uh, since day one. And, uh, that's not constant pumping. They only pump when they need water. So in a two-year period, they may pump a hundred thousand gallons, they may pump ten million gallons. It just depends on what their demand is at the time. So, but the infrastructure is at the ready. Uh, assuming your approval tonight, the contract will be in place to allow them to do that for two more years, then staff recommends approval.
Questions? Name now.
Okay, so when this, uh, when this contract was drawn, uh, Freeport has, um, uh, agreed to pay the twenty-five cents, but there was an amount that was given, renovation that was done at the copper mine for twenty-three thousand. And they said that would be in lieu of ninety-two million gallons. So that's supposed to cover, to cover the first ninety-two million gallons. And after that, we're supposed to start paying us. My question is, have they reached that plateau? Have they reached that amount already and beyond or?
I'm pretty sure they have. I'd have to go back to the other, um, parts of the agreement, but, um, that, that agreement was in lieu of us having to pay for electricity to be replaced at the Queen Mine.
Yeah, it's a twenty-three thousand dollars.
So, um, so basically there was a trade-off there and then after that, then it becomes cash, but they always pay us for the electricity.
And I remember they have reached that, that the last one that I was involved in this, they were just starting, they just finally.
Reached that, so then now that money will be coming to us, okay.
Right, I, I missed amendments one, two and three. I was working somewhere else.
All right.
If not, it just runs in the green brush, girl. Uh, any other questions? Entertain a motion?
I move to approve the fifth amendment to the agreement for sale and purchase of reclaimed water between the city of Bisbee and Freeport MacMoran.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for item number six to approve the fifth amendment to the agreement between Freeport and us for, um, excess forty-five, reclaimed water. Um, roll call please.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweed.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of notice and intent to adopt ordinance O dash two one dash one nine. This is authorizing the recording of certain quitclaim deed to Gerto Teague, Natsido and Lilian Natsido to correct the failure to record a deed from nineteen sixteen.
Really?
All right, Mayor, Council, this is a, uh, this is an old cleanup item. This is before my time.
Yeah, that's a good one. Before my time.
So if I was around it, we would have got a recorder. Uh, I got, we, the city was contacted by an attorney representing the estate of, uh, an individual passed away and, and they're trying to, uh, clean up the title to this property. It had been transferred before in the past, never was an issue. Pioneer raised a concern with the fact that there wasn't a, a recorded deed, uh, from nineteen sixteen, quit claiming it. So, uh, I talked to the attorney and let her know what the process was so that this would all be formalized and make sure that there's a record of it. We're going to do it by quitclaim deed, so we're going to do the ordinance process. And, uh, you know, she understood it was going to take a little bit of time to do it that way. But that way, we have a, a solid record that is going to be there, that Pioneer's going to accept and it's, it's not going to be an issue. So that's just the basis of this, just to clean up something that happened, uh, a few years back. I think that was when Steve was first working.
Yeah, nineteen sixteen.
I'll, I'll take the fall for it. That was the one before the first one. Yeah. Any other, any questions on the cleanup deed? All right, uh, entertain a motion?
I move to approve the notice and intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-one dash nineteen, authorizing the recording of certain quitclaim deed to Gerto Teague, Natsido and Liliana Natsido to correct the failure to record a deed from nineteen sixteen.
Second.
Motion and second for item number seven on our new business to record the deed from nineteen sixteen. Roll call.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember. Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes five zero.
And the last official one is number eight. This is discussion of possible approval to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase fully police package, one T twenty-one Chevrolet fifteen hundred, black and white, four-by-two pickup, using the Warren Grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents from Folsom Chevrolet. And choose a Chevy when we get back. Is this the, is this the enforcement of DUI deed?
Me, the mayor and councilman. Yes, this was part of the Governor's Office Highway Safety grant that I came to you, the last council meeting for, that we were awarded. Finding vehicles right now has been a challenge. What I just handed to you were, we did get three folks on vehicles. The one that we selected was a Chevy pickup, black and white. And the sale price on that is the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars and ten cents. That's for a two-wheel drive Chevy truck. If you look at the other folks, there's another truck in there, and a Tahoe in there. And the prices, one of them is a little bit less. The difference is, is this truck that we selected is fully equipped already with a light package, siren, control box, it's partially outfitted. We do have to make some expenditures with Arizona, Arizona Burner Products AEP, that's who's been equipping our vehicles most recently. And that's the other boat you have in there, the amount of five thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars. That's to put the cage in, empty seat mount, and a weapon rack. And that will finish that off. If we were to buy one of the other vehicles, it's a little bit cheaper, we'd spend twice as much putting the outfitted equipment in it. So I thought that was a really good deal. And I want to thank Sergeant Cox, who I asked to be here tonight, because he's the one that did all the legwork and all the paperwork. And he's the one that's doing all the reporting to the Governor's Office on our statistics for our DUIs and our criminal, criminal traffic violations enforcement that we've been doing. So I wanted to give him that recognition and the legwork that he's done to put this proposal together for us.
Question?
This is fully funded, right?
So it is funded in the amount of five thousand, or I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand. Oh, it's a little off, sorry. Fifty-five thousand, three hundred, I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand dollars is funded from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. We're asking to use out of the, on my operational expenses, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, which will cover the balance, or an amount not to exceed that, which will cover the balance to finish the outfitting that needs to be done. The Governor's Office, when they give us that money, they request that we spend every penny. So we tried my best to do every penny of that. We have to dip into the general fund just a little bit. As you can see, the balance in that line item will be twenty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars. If we spend that, we're still working on some negotiations and whether or not we have some pieces that we can reuse. So that item may go down, but we know we will not exceed that amount.
I have one quick question, there's nothing in here for the radio equipment, where does that come from?
So the radio?
Bring it from another unit?
We will either, yes, if we, if, we will either reuse from another unit, or I believe there's still one left on the shelf. So either way, we'll have, we'll have that covered.
Okay. It's a big zero in here, sorry. I know you maybe want radios.
Yes.
More questions? All right, the last motion, anybody want to make?
I move to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase a fully police package, twenty twenty-one Chevrolet fifteen hundred, black and white, four-by-two pickup, using the awarded grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the amount fifty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents from Folsom Chevrolet.
I second that.
And we do not need to approve, City Manager, the five thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars for this?
That's included in that.
In that five thousand.
It's included in your total figure.
Yes, it is. All right, yeah, oh, just double check, thank you. Do you have a second? Okay, I have a motion and second to approve item number eight, to allow the Bisbee Police Department to use a new truck? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Just gonna jump over item nine at the moment, and anything from the City Managers, early?
Um, thank you, Mayor, just one thing tonight, just want everyone to know that, well, first of all, early happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and to the people of Bisbee. And the reason I say that is because next week, City Hall will be closed on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. That's Wednesday and Thursday, and of course, Morville, we're not open on Friday. So next week, we'll be, we'll be having a short week, Monday and Tuesday. So anyway, if you have any business to conduct with us, please try and get ahold of us on one of those two days, Monday or Tuesday. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. So moving back to item number nine, this will be a possible approval to go into a motion, to, for a motion to go into executive session for the following matter. I have a motion to go into executive session. I'm moving to go into executive session. A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No negative, aye, very non-eyes habit, we'll be into. Saying aye?
Aye.
Posse nay. Chair says ayes have, we are out of executive session. There's no further action, then I will entertain motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Eyes have, very adjourned.